Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's regular meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for November fifteenth. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September twentieth, two thousand and seven, October fourth, two thousand and seven, and October eighteenth, two thousand and seven, planning board meetings. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
I know I have a comment. Wait a minute. I marked it too. There was one correction, but if I can't find it within thirty seconds. Let me just see. No, I won't hold up. It wasn't like a huge thing, so.
Okay. Now, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion from the board to take item C out of order?
Before we do, Mr. Chairman, may I, for the record, congratulate Council Dwyer on her victory?
Congratulations, Council Dwyer.
I do hope you're going to remain as the Planning Board representative of the City Council.
Speak for yourself. Just kidding.
I'm sure many people will be competing with me for that right.
Okay.
Congratulations, Chris.
Congratulations.
On public hearings, if I could have a motion to take item C out of order?
So moved.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll read item C for those of you that may be watching on TV or here in public. The application of Seven Islington Street LLC owner for property located at twenty-nine Tanner Street and Forty Bridge Street, wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval is requested between two lots having the following. Lot forty-nine is shown on map one-twenty-six, decreasing an area from three thousand three hundred forty-two square feet to two thousand eight hundred ninety-nine square feet, and street frontage on Tanner Street remaining at forty-nine feet, lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of seventy-five hundred square feet and a hundred feet of street frontage is required. And lot fifty-two is shown on map one-twenty-six, increasing an area from seven thousand one hundred eleven square feet to seven thousand five hundred fifty-four square feet, and street frontage on Bridge Street remaining at one hundred twenty feet, lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of one thousand square feet and no street frontage is required. Said lots are shown on Assessor Plan one-twenty-six as lot forty-nine and lot fifty-two. The central business B District, the downtown overlay district, and the historic district A. The board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. So, David, I will turn this over to you for some clarification, please.
Yes, the department was informed today on the afternoon that the applicant is withdrawing this application, and so the department would recommend that you postpone it to a time indefinite. And that way, you won't be seeing it again.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the chair votes aye. We'll now go to item A under public hearings. The Planning Board is conducting a public meeting in conjunction with the city's Emergency Operations Center in order to solicit public comment for consideration of changing duplicate street names of the following streets: Monroe Street and Monroe Street Extension. The board action on this matter is deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. Hearing none, David, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this is the second meeting of the board looking at streets that have been indicated as causing problems in terms of the Emergency Operations Center because they are similar sounding to other names. In this case, the two names are Monroe Street and Monroe Street Extension. What is a little bit different this time is I'd like to indicate to the board and also to the public that Nancy Grossman, who has written a book, The Place Names of Portsmouth, in which board members have been provided a copy, has also provided a list of names that are somewhat historic to Portsmouth as potential alternate names. And we have taken that list, and the Emergency Operations Center has reviewed that list to see if there are any potential conflicts. And shortly, that list and a list of street names that are no longer, former street names that are no longer in use but are also historical, will be added to the Police Department and Planning Department webpage, so that as this process continues and we get into some streets where there may actually have to be some significant changes, that information is out there, so that hopefully we'd be able to find some suggestions in it. And additionally, not necessarily to place a plug, but the book also is a pretty good read. With that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Deputy Chief Linda Sessa, who will go over basically what the issues are. I know the board has heard this, but for the public, this may be a bit of the first time, and I think it's a significant enough issue that it's, that we should do it.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Planning Board. I'm here along with Supervisor Gil Emery of the Communications Center. My name is Linda Sessa. I'm the deputy chief of police. I'm going to basically go over the script, the same script that I gave to you last month. I'll try to condense it a little bit for time, but I want to, again, reiterate the issues and the problems that we are pointing out at this point. We have identified approximately thirty-six streets and roads that have duplicate sounding names or have such similar spellings that they can be easily misunderstood by responding fire and police units. I'm fully aware and appreciate the legal complications that can result from initiating this kind of process of changing the names, but sending emergency responders or police officers to the wrong address has obvious liability implications as well as safety issues. In an attempt to begin fixing this problem, the police and fire departments have selected five street names that we feel are the most egregious. Last time I was, last month, when I was before you, we started with Market Street, Market Street Extension. For tonight, we are going to be concentrating on Monroe Street and Monroe Street Extension. The others, just again, for the sake of the record, would be Elwin Avenue, Elwin Road, and Elwin Road Extension, Ledgewood Drive, Edgewood Road, Wedgewood Road, Sherburne Ave., Sherburne Road, Sherburne Street. That last one's particularly troublesome to me. Last month, I spoke about two separate incidents involving Wedgewood and Ledgewood, where police and fire units were sent to the wrong address because it was difficult to hear from the reporting party where they were calling from. Earlier in the year, there was an accident that was called in on what sounded to us to be Ledgewood, so Fire Station One was dispatched and responded. When it was determined that, in fact, the accident was on Wedgewood, Fire Station Three had to be dispatched. Last time, I played you the tape where you could hear, you could hear for yourself the confusion that the dispatcher had from the nine-one-one dispatcher to us. More recently, on July third, two thousand and seven, at approximately five-thirty PM, a house fire was called into our communications center. The male caller clearly states several times that the fire is on Middle Road, and he goes into some detail as to which part of the house is burning. It was actually a good report to us. Fire apparatus from Station One responded, and in getting to Middle Road, drove past Middle Street, and they were able to clearly see that the house fire was not on Middle Road, it was on Middle Street. It is fortunate that the fire department had to drive by one similar sounding street name to get to the other, and we were lucky that particular time. But if this had been an emergency call that did not have a visual marker, as I pointed out to you last month, like smoke or flame, let's say it's assault that's occurring inside the house, it would have been, it could have been an issue, could have been a major issue. So it's the joint recommendation, I'm reiterating to you, of the fire and police departments, that the Planning Board begin the process of reviewing and changing these names to avoid further liability and safety issues. And as I said before, tonight, the next pair for your consideration would be Monroe Street and Monroe Street Extension. Supervisor Emery gave you a handout, which you have in front of you. It had the combined map of all the five streets, which was on the screen just before, and now you've got what's on the screen now: Monroe Street and Monroe Street Extension. We're going to show you a photograph, an aerial photograph of the actual street. I'm going to ask Gil to just use his finger as a marker. Monroe Street is this section. Monroe Street Extension are the three houses to the immediate left and upper corner. So you have Monroe Street, and along the same lateral line, you've got Monroe Street Extension, and the numbers are different. In your handout also, you've got the street names that were once used but are no longer in use by the city, again, taken from Nancy Grossman's book, as Dave Holden pointed out, Place Names of Portsmouth. We also included in the handout mayor's names that have not been used, also from the same source, again, for your consideration. And lastly, I included the statute that governs this issue, two thirty-one, colon, thirty-three, Names, Changes, and Signs. And I've highlighted in paragraph one the following two sentences. "The governing body may change the name of any such street or highway at any time when, in its judgment, there is occasion for so doing. The governing body may change the name of a private street or highway when the name change is necessary to conform to the requirements of the enhanced nine-one-one communication system." And I also want to point out that section two indicates clearly that any new names being contemplated should avoid this issue. That's basically my presentation to you. I'd be repeating myself if I continued. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have on this particular issue.
Questions? Council Dwyer?
Are the number, you point out the difference here where the, the numbers are not continuous, but are the numbers on Extension actually duplicates of some of the numbers on Monroe Street?
That's a very good question. They are not. That's a good question.
They are not?
They are not.
Okay, so, we're not like, we wouldn't end up with...
You wouldn't have three Monroe Street Extension and three Monroe Street. That's a good question. No.
Mr. Coviallo.
The numbers are not continuous as you go up?
They're, they're not duplicative.
They're not duplicative.
But, separate issue, are they continuous? Would it make, could it be that we keep the same numbers on the house?
Another good question. Gil, do we...
Yeah.
You have to be on mic, Gil.
Sorry. If you were to get rid of the...
Gil, you have to be on mic.
If you were to get rid of the extension to the name, you could keep the numbering scheme the same, yes.
Can you repeat it for the...
The number, the numbering sequence is the same from left to right, so it doesn't stop in Monroe Street Extension becoming a new numbering scheme, so you could, if you chose, you could drop the extension, and the numbering scheme would keep the same across the street.
If I could add on to that, actually, Monroe Street would run, the addresses are two, eighteen, seventy-five, and ninety-five. Monroe Street Extension, it's one-seventy-one, one-eighty-seven, and two-hundred.
Oh, that's what those little numbers are.
One of the reasons it's somewhat easy to do is because some of the bigger properties have frontage on US Route One or Middle Street.
I couldn't make the picture any bigger to make it show the whole street, I'm sorry.
Okay, I see, I don't see that.
Go, say, Tony.
David, I don't know that Middle Street plays a part in...
Might be Middle Road.
There you go.
I didn't want to bring that up. It might be a little sensitive.
I'm kind of familiar with the neighborhoods.
Any other questions for Glenn? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public comment session. If anybody would like to speak to, for, against this? If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jim Nevin, and guess what? I live at one-eighty-seven Monroe Street Extension. Can I go over there? Am I allowed to do that and talk to you from over there?
If you want to, just grab that microphone, and I think Glenn will turn it on for us.
Does that work? Hello? Hello? Am I working?
I think it is.
This is me, okay? That's one-eighty-seven. First of all, I appreciate what you're doing. I want to let you know that. Right here is a corner of Middle Street and Middle Road. That, I see what you're trying to do. It won't take too much of your time. I tried to figure out why I'm on Middle Street Extension, why, excuse me, why I'm on Monroe Street Extension, just not Monroe Street. And the only story I've been able to get, that I haven't been able to prove, that's an urban legend yet, at some point, when fire departments wanted to go to a fire in this situation, if they needed to go, if they heard it was on Monroe Street, they would know it would be this section. If it was Monroe Street Extension, they would know to go to this part. I haven't been able to prove or disprove that. Somebody told me it. I don't know, nothing else. It sounded like a pretty good story. I don't know what you want to do. I talked to, I mean, when it gets down to it, for an ambulance or anything like that, I fully understand what you're talking about. Monroe Street and Monroe Street Extension, we're talking about seven people. We're talking, this is, this is two-hundred, I'm one-eighty-seven, this is my neighbor. I tried to get them to come tonight, but they couldn't. So that's three. This address is on South Street, four, five, six. There's six of us total on Monroe Street Plantation, Monroe Street, whatever you want to call. If you've got to take the extension off, if that's what you've got to do, do it. I have nothing against former mayors. I don't want my street to be a former mayor's street. I'd like to stay Monroe Street. I'd like to keep it Monroe Street Extension. If you've got to drop the extension, then drop it. I think I'm done.
And I think that's what we're here proposing tonight, is just to make it Monroe Street, keep it, and just drop the extension, so...
If I could just add perhaps a little comment on it. I think when, sometimes, two on the extensions, that was actually when the street was extended further. I don't know if that is what happened in this, but the original street may have been Monroe Street, and then the next lot was developed, and they kept the extension. What is good is that when DPW was doing the numbers, and they did this in Market Street too, they kept the numbers going up, so there is no need to renumber in this instance, as is the case with Market Street. So the recommendation at the present time is actually just to drop the extension and to keep it Monroe Street throughout. And the post office has indicated they can handle both addresses for a fair amount of time, and I think that's probably the simplest solution, which is probably the best solution. So the recommendation from the department is just drop the extension, and there shouldn't be any need to renumber.
Great. I can tell you that I needed an ambulance once at one-eighty-seven Monroe Street Extension, and the ambulance got me to the hospital in time for me to be talking to you tonight. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other first-time speakers in the public comment section? Second-time speakers? Third and final time? See no one rise, we'll close the public comment session. It's your pleasure, board. Mr. Coviallo.
I, we have to, we recommend this to City Council, is that correct?
Yes.
I make a motion to recommend to City Council that the Monroe Street Extension, the word "extension" be dropped and just become Monroe Street, and the numbering remain the same.
Second, discussion on the motion?
Maybe just for the benefit of the public, anybody else who might be following this, we should read out the other two, three, and four of the recommendations that the department's put forward, assuming that's part of your motion, just so people get the sense of how this process might go.
You're educated.
Your motion, go for it.
All right, the, well, I read the first recommendation. The second one is, "As required, affected property should be assigned new street numbers by the Department of Public Works in consultation with the US Postal Service. Please note the US Postal Service can make this change quickly and would maintain both street names for a specified time period." The third recommendation is, "Given the sensitivity inherent in changes of this kind, that the council should consider conducting its own public hearing." And finally, the fourth, "If this recommendation is ultimately approved by the council, the Planning Department recommends the name change become effective on the first day of the month following the receipt of a report from the Department of Public Works stating all renumbering and street signing is assigned and ready for use slash installation."
And the only thing in this case is there would be no need for a renumbering.
Right.
I was wondering if number two conflicted with the motion.
We should get rid of it.
Right, maybe we should modify that recommendation, number two, in this case.
Maybe just say new street name, whatever, if it applies.
Correct, I would modify two, just saying that...
Just note, we'll modify number two as being a note for future other, other locations, but not for this one.
Right, good. Just one, just one question for the department. David, the post office said they, the shadow street names, they deliver to either address. If they get a piece of mail, X number of months out, it goes to Monroe Street Extension, they know to deliver to Monroe Street.
Correct.
Which won't be that big a deal in this case, but it might in other street names we're considering. How long does that shadow address go? Did they say six months?
I think it's a year.
Yeah, I'll make sure that we have a definite time when we have the other name changes, but evidently, it can be done rather easily, and they will do it for some time, but I'll get definition.
Yeah, and as I recall, it was a long period of time, so, just to put people's minds at ease.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you.
And I'd indicate to the board, we may likely be doing this at our December meeting, and it'll be a little more complex.
Stay tuned. Moving on to item B of the public hearings, the application of Michael and Leanne Edwards, owners for property located at sixty-four Brackett Road, and Eugene and Kimberly LaCroche, owners for property located at sixty-eight Brackett Road, wherein final subdivision approval for lot line revision is requested between two lots having the following. Lot twenty-two is shown on map two-oh-six, decreasing an area from six thousand seven hundred thirty-eight square feet to six thousand three hundred thirty-eight square feet, and street frontage on Brackett Road decreasing from sixty-six feet to sixty-two feet. And lot twenty-one is shown on map two-oh-six, increasing an area from five thousand eight hundred forty-nine square feet to six thousand two hundred forty-nine square feet, and street frontage on Brackett Road increasing from fifty-six feet to sixty feet, and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of fifteen thousand square feet and a hundred feet of street frontage is required. The intent of this application is to convey a four-foot by one-hundred-foot strip of land situated between the two lots from lot twenty-two to lot twenty-one. Said lots are shown on Assessor Plan two-oh-six as lots twenty-one and twenty-two, and lie within a single residence B District. The board action on this matter has deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. Hearing none, who here is tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, I'm Gene LaCroche at sixty-eight Brackett Road, one of the properties affected by this petition. My neighbor, Michael Edwards, is here as well, from sixty-four Brackett Road. This is the final step. We've been before you before. Approval was granted. There were certain conditions in connection with such approval, namely, that we had to get approval from the Board of Adjustment for a variance, which was granted. This is our last stop. The plans have been submitted to the board, and we hope that you approve the petition. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Seeing there's no questions, I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against this application? Second time? Third and final time, to, for, or against? Seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Do you have a motion, board? Mr. Coviallo.
We accept the final subdivision with two stipulations, assuming that the first stipulation has been met, that this flat plan meets all the requirements. The two stipulations would be that the boundary monuments should be placed in accord with DPW requirements, and that the submission to the Department of Public Works of electronic data suitable for updating the city's assessing record.
I have a motion?
Second.
Seconded, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hayden.
Just one question, David, maybe you know the answer to this. You know, Jim Vera has PO Box six-twenty-eight on there. We don't use that at all anymore, do we, for the city of Portsmouth address?
That's correct.
So, maybe it's just in, on the plan, and two places would be old oh-three-eight-oh-two-dash-six-to-eight-zip. You might want to just modify that, should...
I would just make that a stipulation, and we can do that.
Acceptable.
And it occurs twice?
Twice, yes.
Okay.
Unless the school department still uses that, but I think so.
Any other comments, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Item C, we read previously, has been postponed to a time indefinite. We'll now move to application D under the public hearings, the application of Saco Avenue Professional Building, Inc., owner for property located at one-twenty-five Brewery Lane, for a second additional one-year extension of site review approval, which was granted by the Planning Board on November seventeen, two thousand and five, to construct a four-story, sixty-four-by-two-hundred-and-forty-foot, fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot, forty-eight-unit residential building with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan one-fifty-four as lot two and lies within a, lies within a business district. The board action on this matter is deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. Hearing none, who here is on, on behalf of the applicant tonight?
Yes, good evening to the board members and the staff members in front of me. My name is Chris Keenan. I'm an attorney in Portsmouth. I represent Saco Avenue Professional Building, Inc., the owner of the property. I represent Saco Avenue Professional Building, Inc., the owner of the property. This particular site, it's the old DPW site, for anyone who is not familiar with where it is. It was purchased at auction by the owner a number of years ago. He is looking to put up a 48-unit residential building. This was approved by the planning board after, I think we took quite a while to go through the approval process the last time around, but it was approved finally on November 17, 2005. We received a one-year, it's basically an automatic extension, pro forma extension, at the October 19, 2006 planning board meeting. There's only, there really is only one reason that this project has not been built at this point. The sewer separation, wastewater, stormwater separation project in this area goes through this site. The current sewer lines, the single sewer lines, actually lie right underneath where the building is proposed to be built. The project, and when we were here last, we thought the separation project was going to go around the perimeter. The final design plans brought it right through the middle of the site, which, if you saw the, if you're familiar with the plans, it makes a lot of sense. That sewer separation project in this area was supposed to take place, was supposed to be constructed in the spring and summer of 2007, this past spring and summer. That's what everybody expected. Unfortunately, a lot of unforeseen circumstances that had nothing to do with the developer of the project. It had, there were some legal issues that came up between the city and some abutting landowners, where they needed to run the sewer separation, prevented the sewer separation project from going forward this past spring and summer. You might wonder, why don't we build and then let the sewer separation project come through? If we were to build, we have to move the lines that are directly underneath the proposed building to move around the building. We would then end up finishing off a parking lot, finishing off sidewalks, finishing off the landscaping, and then the city's going to come in behind us and tear it all up. And then they're going to have an expense of putting it all back together again. We have been working with DPW on this situation. It's at their request that we've been holding off, and we're looking to cooperate with everyone here. We are very hopeful, DPW is very hopeful, that the sewer separation project is moving forward in the spring of, spring and summer of '08. That's the intent. Once that comes through, we can pull the building permit because some of the work is going to be done at the same time. And we won't have to come back here again, I hope. But the only reason we're back here is really to help out DPW and the city at this stage of the game. The plan, and I have, I have one of the engineers from Ambit who's going to step up. The plan that is before the board today is virtually identical to the plan that you approved in 2005. There are a few changes, and the changes surround the fact that the sewer separation that was going to go around the perimeter is now coming through the middle of the property. That affected some drainage issues. Ambit has worked with the design company and with DPW on those drainage issues. We went before TAC. There were some suggestions from DPW that the drains be moved from directly on the line to slightly off the line to permit some separation of some pollutants before they got into the sewer lines. But that really is the only change. That also affected the water lines going into the project. We were initially looking at one and then branching, or three, with shut-offs on the city property, but because it's coming through a narrow area under the new configuration, we're looking to put in one line, and then we will branch off three lines from the one line, but the shut-offs will all be within the easement, the utility easement that we're presenting to the city, that we're granting to the city. The only other change was the removal of four striped crosswalks. That change was done at the request of the city traffic engineer. She, you might wonder why it's a change now. Back in '05, if you remember, the city traffic engineer, the former engineer, left in the late winter, early spring. He was working on the project. The new traffic engineer did not come on board until, I think it was November 1, it was just a couple of weeks before we came before the board. She really didn't have an opportunity to look at it. In the meantime, there was an independent traffic engineering firm contracted by the city to review projects that were going forward. It was at their request that we put in the crosswalks. The current city traffic engineer has requested that we take them out to meet ADA requirements. I am going to turn the meeting over to someone who is a lot better at explaining the engineering aspects of this than I am, and if you have any questions for me, please just let me
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Karen Lovejoy of Ambit Engineering. I'll be speaking to the application of Saco Avenue Professional Building, Incorporated. Although the project engineer is unable to be here tonight due to a scheduling conflict, I'm here to address any questions you may have. The technical advisory committee met on October 30, 2007, and reviewed the plan set. The second additional one-year extension of site review approval was recommended with stipulations. I would like to demonstrate that the stipulations have been addressed as requested. Would you prefer that I read each stipulation before I point it out, or just march through them as they're enumerated?
You can march through them.
Okay. Stipulation 1, this has been incorporated as Note 7 on Plan Sheet C5. Stipulation 2, this has been incorporated as Note 8 on Sheet C3. Stipulation 3, the catch basins have been moved off the main drainage line to allow for stormwater treatment, as requested by the city. This redesign is shown on Sheet C5. I am not as good at this as John Shagnon, but let's see. They've been moved off the line over here and in this area. The attendant grading changes can be found on Sheet C6, and the drainage table has been updated to reflect the changes on Detail Sheet 3. So that, and the sewer easement, sewer and drainage easement plants have also reflect the change of the new sewer design. Stipulation 4, this has been added to Note 6 on Sheet C5. Again, the water service line has been redesigned in response to the redesign of the city's sewer separation project. There is a proposed, there is proposed one private water line coming into the site with three water shut-offs. One of the water shut-offs will go to the fire hydrant, one water shut-off goes to the building for water service, and one water shut-off would go to the building's fire department's stand pipe connection. The private water line is located within the sewer and drainage easement to be granted to the city, thereby granting access to the water shut-offs as needed. Stipulation 5, the upright handicap signs have been added to Sheet C4 and are shown on Sheet D1 as Detail A, which does include the signs. Stipulation 6, John Shagnon, the project engineer, did meet with the city traffic engineer to address the traffic-related concerns. It was recommended that four crosswalks be eliminated. This one, this one, and... Two of the crosswalks did not go to any sidewalks. Their purpose had been as a traffic calming device. This result would be better achieved, it was decided, by a speed bump placed in between where they were to go, in order to slow down the traffic coming through the parking lot. So that the speed bump would slow down people coming through this way here. So that was why two were taken out. The off-site crosswalk was also eliminated. The city traffic engineer pointed out that the tree placement may need to be reconsidered on the landscape plan, when, will need to be reconsidered for site interference when the landscape design is reviewed. A few trees may need to be relocated a little bit. Stipulation 7, Knox Box was added to Note 4 on Sheet C5. I believe those are all the stipulations from that meeting. May I answer any questions?
Any questions for the engineer? Ms. Hayden.
I don't know, were you at the, I don't know if you were at the TAC?
I was not at the TAC. This was an unexpected thing that I had to step in.
Then maybe it's a question for staff than really about, I didn't see on here a detail for the lighting fixture. I know you've got a lighting plan on here, but since this was originally approved several years ago, we've become much more dark sky friendly focused, and I don't know if you can tell me if the lights that are proposed for here would be dark sky friendly?
There has actually been a note added to Sheet...
Probably to the lighting plan.
4. It is not on the lighting plan, interestingly. There is a note that it is a dark sky compliant site, and they do have the covered lights.
Bottom light of C4.
I'm happy to add a detail, if that's required.
If, seems like it would make sense to add a detail to me, I think that's easier than I do.
Dark sky light, a dark sky light detail.
I'm looking for, where is that note, Tony?
Bottom of C4 on the right.
Excellent. So that note is there. Do we want to see a detail on these plans for the light fixture?
I think it would be appropriate.
Seems like a good idea to me.
Yes, okay, I have that noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for those in the city that are certainly more knowledgeable of details than I am. One of the reasons this is being, if I may paraphrase, being asked for another extension is the sewer project. Is that an accurate representation that the sewer project is sort of holding this up?
I think it's a little bit of both, but that is not inaccurate. If, if everything that Attorney Keenan has said is basically correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant's engineer or attorney? Mr. Coviallo.
With regard to lighting, I remember when this came before us, I was here, this application, I remember it. I recall asking for lighting along Chevrolet Avenue. Now, I blame myself in that I didn't review the minutes clearly enough when they came through and we approved them, I should have confirmed that. That's an extremely dark area. I think some lighting has to be added, definitely, at the very least, by the, by the crosswalk.
I think that's a very good point. How about, we would be happy to add lighting at this entrance here, where this, and perhaps two lighting fixtures over here? I agree, I think that's an excellent point.
It should be something probably worked out with the department. That's one stipulation I'm going to request. And then the orientation, if you look on Sheet C4, the orientation in the lower left, I wonder if, I mean, I use this, this shopping center.
I do have C4.
Maybe I just have very poor memory. I use this shopping center at least once a week, and the orientation at the, at the intersection of Brewery Lane and, and the crosswalk there, I think it's a four-way stop sign, I think there's stop bars, and I think it's a 90-degree intersection. I don't think they have angled parking like that.
What I'd recommend is you make a stipulation and perhaps as part of your approval, and perhaps have Deb Finnegan and Dave DeFosse review it, and if they concur to do that, otherwise you could send it back to look at that.
I guess what I'm asking is, are you recommending that the, I don't know what it's called, it's still Chevrolet Ave, are you suggesting to have it go straight through without a stop sign now? If you were to come around Chevrolet Ave and then go right to left on the drawing. Currently, there's a stop sign there at Brewery Lane. Are you suggesting you want to go straight through now without a stop sign, or?
No, and I believe, I believe I'm seeing a stop sign on there.
C4 shows a stop sign.
That's what I think.
I don't see a stop bar or...
Where, are you at Chevrolet and by the liquor room?
I'm saying, come down here.
No, no. Go back down.
If you want to just grab the microphone, there's a microphone right there, you can just pull it out.
At the, at the intersection of Brewery Lane and where it goes into the, to the parking lot at Plaza 800, we talked about this today. I believe there are currently three stop signs there, I can't imagine it'll come out.
Right, the drawings don't show that. That'll be a stipulation that we keep them.
Well, that's because they're not on our property, for one thing. They, they ended up on the Plaza 800 property, if I'm, if I remember correctly.
I just want to ensure that we're not removing stop signs.
They're not going anywhere.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't let them go anywhere because my office is about 200 yards down the street on Brewery Lane, and I go through there three or four times a day.
And then my last question is, where exactly is the speed bump?
Yeah. I guess I would also ask that to be noted on the plan. Yes.
Counselor Dwyer.
Just to clarify, the parking that goes with this building, it's both the parking level in the building and then the parking that's across the lot, or?
Yes.
So it's the spaces that are adjacent to that lawn area in addition to the parking in the building.
That is correct, that is correct.
Yeah, and, and then there are the two entry exits, just trying to get a sense of the traffic flow, how, how people, what the intention is for how people will be moving around this area, going in.
Hmm.
You know, what the, what the sense is of how people will be going into the building or what the intention is and how the traffic will be moving around this building.
We, we covered all this pretty thoroughly the last time around. The traffic, and I don't have the traffic report with me, but the traffic report I think showed approximately two-thirds of people coming in, coming off of Brewery Lane, and approximately one-third coming in off of Chevrolet Ave. We are putting in sidewalks, that's going to make it a lot easier for people walking along Brewery Lane, going towards Plaza 800, to be able to walk that, presently, they're in the road, I know that, because I walk it a lot. But we will be adding sidewalks to that. All in all, we were faced with some choices that weren't really good choices because Plaza 800 is built, the city yard is there, and some things were done in the past that, were we all in front of the board together, probably would have been done a little bit differently. But we can't make improvements to other people's land, and, you know, it made it a tough situation, but we did, that was one of the things that we went through very carefully the last time around.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against the application? Second time, third and final time, to, for, or against? Seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious. Typically, the department makes recommendations as to specific applications and options. In this particular instance, there isn't one. Is that just an oversight or would the department...
Ms. Hayden. Oh. Well, I was just going to say the TAC committee did make a recommendation. It's recommending approval with something like eight or nine stipulations, and the last one is to include all stipulations from the prior approval.
And the confusing thing, Don, is that that's on page seven, and then it's followed by the 2005 stuff. So if you turn to page seven, the TAC recommendation is there with the eight stipulations. Those are usually, I think, at the end because this is such an... I was looking for them there, too, but they precede the 2005.
We don't often get one that goes back this far.
Right.
So in this instance, the department doesn't have a position or a recommendation, one way or the other, and we are to take TAC's recommendations with the eight stipulations?
Well, don't forget, we serve on TAC, so that is the department's recommendation.
I understand. But that's fundamentally different than saying the department recommends. TAC is not the department, but maybe it's semantics. That's all. So, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Coviallo.
Another question, sorry, before I make a motion. So the TAC recommendations on page seven, the eight recommendations, those include... those encompass all the TAC recommendations from October 4th, 2005, August 30th, and August 2nd?
If you look at the...
Number eight.
Yeah. Look at number eight.
It just says, number eight says November 17th, site review.
That November 17th includes them all. Most of them have been addressed.
All right.
If you want, what we're looking at is, we're making some additional recommendations, such as a construction management plan, such as the lighting, such as some revisions that have come about as the sewer projects move forward. But we're also making sure all the other conditions are there because that is the best way to make sure that we got everything covered.
Then I'll make a motion. Motion to approve with the eight stipulations from TAC, and we have a couple other stipulations. One is to provide a detail for the dark-sky-friendly lighting, that the applicant meet with the department and come up with a lighting plan along Chevrolet Avenue, that the speed bump be noted on the plan, and that the intersection of Brewery Lane, I guess for lack of other term, Chevrolet, at the three-way stop sign be correctly configured as it is today and not changed.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? No hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now move on to item three on the agenda, City Council referrals and requests for property... Item A, properly located at 82 to 86 Congress Street, request for easement agreement, copper-clad awning over Chestnut Street entrance. The board action in this matter has been deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. So seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request from the council to approve an awning, which is actually a... excuse me. A significant structure is a permanent structure that would be mounted over a sidewalk, so it's deemed that it will require an easement. It looks like it's going to be very appropriate to the area. It's received HCC approval. The recommendation is that you would recommend to the council that an easement should be granted and that the applicant should work with the legal department to have the language easement or the language for the easement written and approved by the legal department. And Architect Steve McHenry is here in case you have any questions in particular to it.
Do we have any questions for Mr. McHenry? No? Do I have a...
I would make a motion as recommended by the department that we give a positive action at City Council, that an easement should be granted, and that the legal department should draft the language for them.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Steve. Item four, new business. Item A, the appointment of CIP Subcommittee. The board action in this matter is deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. So hearing none. I would like to see if there are members that would like to sit on the CIP Subcommittee.
Pick me.
Mr. Coker. Mr. Coviallo.
Will you pizza? Yes.
Pizza and beer, please.
We'll have pizza. And I believe Mr. Hetmanek has also agreed to sit on the Subcommittee, as will I. So there's four members, so...
And just so you know, that meeting will be December 19th, and it'll be most of the afternoon, but probably not as late as we're indicating. But if you can serve that time, that'd be appropriate. Thank you.
That's on a Wednesday, David?
Yes.
What were those hours, David?
Roughly from 11:30 to 5:00.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So, thank you, Mr. Coviallo. Thank you, Mr. Coker, and...
Thank you, Jerry, too. Yes.
Wherever he may be. Item B, request for a work session by Bothwick Forest. The board action in this matter is deemed to be legislative in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. So hearing none. David, I'll turn this over to you.
Yes. Actually, probably need to give you a little bit more background. Right now, we have a meeting scheduled for November 29th with the Housing Partnership. They have requested that that meeting be postponed to a time indefinite. They are continuing to meet and discuss, and some of their principals may not be available that day. So that means effectively that we don't have an agenda item on that meeting, and at the same time, representatives of the Bothwick Forest application have requested a new date. If you recall, they requested that their last date be postponed, and we weren't able to set a new date. So at this point, they're looking for a date, and I'm indicating to you that the November 29th date is open. Other than that, we're into December or January.
I would like to hold it on the 29th if we could.
Is that the consensus of the board?
6:00 PM?
I think that causes a problem for Paige, doesn't it?
Yeah. I don't remember whatever we had settled on. Didn't we set...
I think that one was going to be, I think, 7 o'clock.
I believe so.
It's just a work session.
It's just a work session.
We don't have anything else then?
Last time it was work session and public comment.
Their request right now is a work session. If you did it, I would recommend it be a work session.
That's 7:00.
Yes.
Does that work for you, Paige?
And I would also recommend that you direct us to let the abutters know that there will be a work session.
Yeah.
Doesn't require a motion, David?
No. Is that the consensus of everyone?
If we get a lot of people showing up, though, it's kind of hard to turn them away without letting them talk.
Yeah. We always end up with that.
Can we make a call that night?
We want to allow public comment.
It's up to the board. You could limit it. What we've got is several projects that have a great deal of interest, so what we're doing is letting people know these are the formative meetings where actions are being taken, so you can indicate whether or not you would allow a few minutes for public comment or that you won't have any.
We could have a work session with limited public comment, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. 30 minutes most.
Do we want to limit the public comment session to a...
I respectfully disagree, and I don't want to get too cosmic about all this, but part of the process is to allow public comment, and I think this project generates a lot of public comment. I believe the public has the right, and we have the obligation to allow them. Limiting public comment, as much as it's nice to get home at a reasonable hour, I think limiting the public comment squashes some of the process and limits some of the process. So I would be in favor of a public hearing and just let the public have their say. Period.
Well, then, their request, right, not to... I'm not contradicting or anything, but they're looking for a work session with the board, and you've just said a public hearing. Those could very well be two different meetings.
The two different meetings would be preferable to limiting, in my opinion, preferable to limiting public comment.
Okay. Mr. Hoplow.
So I was going to say is I think there's a distinct difference between a public hearing and a work session. And we routinely conduct work sessions with folks to do a back-and-forth between the board and the appellant. So I... if we do allow the public to speak, I'm for limiting it in some fashion or our work won't get done.
Well, I just think, I don't know if the applicant's to the point of a public hearing, but I certainly think public comment is, if we think we've got all the items covered, which I know we don't think we do, that public comment session, we can limit it. We can say there's 30 minutes of public comment. And I think what that... Hold on. I think what that may do is get the points out there in little bits of information, but at least we can hear them all. The applicant may change things drastically based upon that public comment, so...
Ms. Hayden.
And the difference for me, Don, is we're not going to be making any decision that night. And I think what we have done typically has worked really well. Like, we have our little work sessions, and if there's people sitting out there, we turn to them, say, "Do you have anything compelling you want to say?" And they have spoken, and it's worked out pretty well.
Yes.
If I may, I see it very differently. I see the public as viewing the process, and we've heard this time and time again as board members, when the public stands up and says, rightly or wrongly, that we, we the public, get limited comment time, we the public don't get to have our say, we the public are getting left out of the process. I would personally prefer to have a work session, do our work, no public comment, no public hearing, and then move to another one and give the public their say. This is very, very... We've seen it. There's a lot of people that want to talk about this. There's a lot of people that's impacted. I would personally prefer to not have any public comment at the work session and just have another hearing, a public hearing.
I think maybe what we ought to do then is Counsel Dwyer.
The one disadvantage of that, I mean, the one advantage of what we were talking about is informed public comment, that if people have come, listened to us through a work session, then those are the people who are listening along with us to the issues. To hear from them at the end is often very illuminating because they have heard the presentation, they have heard our discussion, they're adding into our discussion. I think that's very helpful. When you do only a public hearing, you get the mix of informed and uninformed, and you get a lot of repeat of stuff that is irrelevant to what's been talked about. What I think is helpful to us, I agree with you, the public needs their say, but what's helpful to us is the kind of informed public comment that comes after our deliberation, where somebody adds in something that we might not have brought up during that work session.
That's true.
So I don't want to get rid of that part. I think that's value. I think that they have different values, which is, I guess, what Rick said.
Would it be possible, Mr. Chairman, or David, on the public notice that goes out, an explanation of what the limited public comment, either the purpose or the content or something like that? I think it's important that the public in their mind, either their informed mind or uninformed mind, understand the difference in the two because otherwise, I think we run the risk, the very real risk, of having the public say, "We were shut out of the process."
But the difference being, this is a work session.
I understand.
This is not a public hearing.
And I think David had said that the abutters would be notified. Is that correct?
I was recommending that you do that because there is an awful lot of interest in it. It's like when we were doing the RDI incentive out in Atlantic Heights. They wanted to be aware of when the board was looking at the issue.
And therefore, we could... and please correct me if I'm wrong, maybe we are legally constrained to say certain things in a public notice, but one could say, for instance, there will be limited public comment taken for the purpose of whatever, or some language that lets them know that this is not the only time they will have a chance to talk. You could say there will be a public hearing at a later date or something like that. I just want to make sure.
I think we could, in my opinion, I think we could address it that night. Call it as a work session. That's what it is. People that are informed or uninformed are going to want to show up. We'll start the meeting by saying there'll be a 30-minute public comment session. Limit your comments to three minutes so everybody has a chance to speak. Boom. We can get it.
That would be my recommendation. I don't know what anyone else thinks.
That's reasonable.
So, Ms. Hayden.
Yeah. On the night of the meeting, we could just say that the board may choose to entertain some public comment at the end of a work session if time allows. You know, if people are showing up at a work session, they care, you know? And I mean, I think we could leave it, you know, at our discretion. We might have a really good work session that goes on for three hours, and, you know, then we could... The applicant may say, "They never want a public hearing because they're not going to go forward," or we may say, "Jesus, there's 200 people in the room. We better schedule a public hearing soon for this."
Okay. That's fair. I withdraw my question.
So I guess what I'd like to make that decision, though, at the start of the meeting, whether we're going to allow it or not, so that if people are waiting for three hours and then we say, "Jeez, we're busy." So I think we ought to set a finite time, give them 30 minutes, public comment. It may be three people, it may be 33. I'd like to limit it to a... So we can get a little bit, but I think we should give them time to speak. I think that may help if we have another work session to give us additional information that we weren't aware of. So that would be my recommendation. If that's a consensus of the board, I don't think we need a vote, but... So you'll take care of it on the planning end of it, the advertising end of it?
Can everyone be here on the 29th?
7:00 PM?
Yes. I think 7:00 is the best for the board.
Yep.
So, does not require a motion.
No.
We'll go on to the final item of the night, item five, amended site plan review. Item A, property owned by Raymond Ramsey, located off Kearsarge Way for minor site plan amendment. The board action in this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. David?
What this is, is a minor site plan amendment, which goes with a rather complex history to a project. The two amendments have to deal with a stipulation that required that funds be set aside for work along the Kearsarge Way Market Street intersection. At the time that the original approval was done, it was assumed that that project would be moving forward rather quickly with the aid of New Hampshire DOT and the city. In point of fact, the project was delayed, and I think it's no great surprise that most of the highway projects in the state are on a slower schedule. This one is still on the list. It is deemed as a high priority, but because of the cost of it and the scheduling of it, the timing on it has been slipping so that it's not possible for the applicant to actually meet the original intent of the stipulation. So what we've agreed, and the applicant has agreed, is that they will actually provide the funds that are required, and it'll be part of the bond, which means the city can secure those funds when it's appropriate to do the project. And it's actually more preferable than the original one. So we still meet the spirit and the intent of that issue. The second one is not as sort of large as it might at first seem. What happened is, is there's a discrepancy between what was on the application and what was on the plan. The plans that were reviewed were correct, which is what everyone based their review on. In other words, the plan on the building, or the building shown on the plan, was correctly. What wasn't correct was the application. If it had been the other way around, we wouldn't be sitting here. We would be coming back through. But also, to be sure of that, we made sure that the Board of Adjustment had an opportunity to review and make sure they were still comfortable with their action. And frankly, when I went through TAC and I went through everything else, we were dealing with that size building. So we deem that as also being administrative in nature, although a little different, too. I did ask that Attorney Griffin be present in case you had any questions, but the staff has met with the legal department and were satisfied these are administrative in nature, and that's a long-winded explanation of why we're indicating that we're prepared to move forward on it.
Ms. Hayden.
So David, the plans, the size of the building that was shown in the plan that the board reviewed was the 310 by 63 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
We don't need a vote or anything else. We're advising you, this is our action.
So David, the plans, the size of the building that was shown in the plan that the board reviewed was the, uh, three hundred and ten by sixty-three feet.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
We don't need a, a vote or anything else. We're advising you, this is our action. If you have a problem with it, then let us know.
Mr. Coviallo.
What year was the site review?
Uh, I think it was two thousand five. Uh, the case though goes back to about nineteen eighty-three. I'll spare you the details.
Anybody have any exceptions or any comments? No? Doesn't require a vote, David?
No, it does not.
Okay. That was the last item on the agenda, as a reminder. Uh, two weeks from tonight at seven, we'll have a work session on the Bothwick Forest. Any other housekeeping items, David?
Yes, one. Uh, staff wishes you and yours the best of Thanksgiving.
Back at you.
Well, thank you. Move for adjournment? Good night, thank you.